And you're on.
Hi, good evening, everybody. To bring this session of the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals to order on September 7th. My name is Chris Goodwin, joining me is Jason Naves, John Stokes, John Groll, and Mark Parento. On the agenda today, so Application 2023-1. We have a 20 Bear Hill Road, AKA Zero Bear Hill Road, Cedar Dale Tennis Club, Selco Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, request for variance from provisions of Section 50.4, 50-4.5 permitted uses under the RI District, Section 50-6.3b3 to permit a wireless communication facility outside of the wireless communication district, and Section 50-8.1 table of dimensional requirements to increase maximum height of the Groveland zoning bylaw. All right, who is here on behalf of the applicants?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Jaimo, and I represent Verizon Wireless. I'm actually an attorney. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I've got with me Sohail, who's the RF engineer, who filed a report that's in your package, and Chip, yeah, and Chip Fredt, who's the real estate manager for this project for Verizon. This was a challenge for Verizon because they were trying to find a site within your overlay district that they could use to provide the service in the area where they need coverage in the town, and they were not able to find a site within the overlay district that would cover the area they needed. This site, however, does, and there was a willing landlord, and what they've done is they've tried to design a site that fits all the standards for a tower under your bylaw, except for the fact that it's not in the overlay district. So that's the reason for the requests. We requested a use variance under, essentially under two provisions of your bylaw, as well as a height variance, and I understand that Groveland does not typically authorize use variances, but in the case of a wireless facility, there have been cases that say that a zoning board is authorized to grant use variances in order to avoid prohibiting wireless service for an area of their town. So that's really the aspect of it that we're, that we're here to talk to you about tonight. We filed the, the application about a month ago. I see you all have your, your plans out there. This is, this would be 120-foot-high monopole tower. The antennas would be at the 115-foot height on that tower, four sides with four antennas on each side. The intent is, from that site, to cover a large area of that part of the town. Sohail will, will be able to show you the coverage maps and the reason why we need this site and that other sites aren't, you know, are not really available or suitable to, to meet this coverage need. The site is up behind the parking area. It's within an area that has some trees. It is at a high point, relative, relative high point, which gives it good, good coverage above, above Bear Hill Road in the area that it needs to serve. I think if you have the plans up, I think we should probably show them the plans. That would probably be the best way to do that. You gonna get this on the TV, on the TV also? Do we have to angle it some way, or just tell us how to do it?
That's fine.
That's good, all right, great.
We'll start with the network design first, and then move into the...
We can do that, yeah, that's right, particularly if you have the sheets up that way. Sohail, you wanna, you wanna just explain to them the, the coverage needs and the, the reason why we need this site to, to make that coverage?
If whoever's gonna be speaking could just grab the microphone, please.
Yeah, there we go. I don't know why I'm, I wasn't gonna say that's...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Board. So, just like to explain this map briefly, what different colors mean, and the various symbols that we have here. I'll explain the symbols first. These black, all these black symbols, the three sector, they're called sites, and the black ones are existing sites in and around Groveland, Mass. And the, the blue indicates our proposed site. The, each, each shape, triangular shape, represents a sector which is pointing in a particular direction. So for our proposed location, it has four different shapes, four different directions. So it's a four-sectored site. The colors that you see, the yellow and the green, green represents 700 megahertz frequency band, there's the low frequency, and there's a mid-band, and then there's a high-frequency band. So, to give you a, a representation of how the low and medium, mid-band cover the areas, I have shown the two bands. We could show just only one band, you know, low band, but then it wouldn't give you a correct picture of, you know, when you get into higher frequency, how much less it covers. So it is a comparison in itself, when you see the green and the yellow in the low band and the mid-band. So those are the colors. The white spaces are, okay, going, going back to the colors, the green, which is a low band, represents a threshold of minus 95 dBm, or it is considered to be coverage that a user can, it's called reliable coverage by some networks, and a user can have a voice call, have a data session, a good data session, and that, that is why we use the threshold. Actually, both are at minus 95 dBm. So, green and the yellow are both neg 95, but they're just different frequency band. Anything in white is weaker than minus 95 dBm. It doesn't necessarily mean that there is no coverage, but it will not be sufficient maybe to maintain a call. You may end up in a drop call, or if you're, if you have a data session, you know, internet browsing or whatever, it may be interrupted several times, or, you know, you may drop the connection as well. So the white spaces, green, yellow, that's, those are the areas to remember. And then, is this one page? Go ahead. No, I've got two, okay. So as you, if you remember, all that white space now is filled in by the proposed site location at 115 feet antenna centerline, as we call it, which is the midpoint of the antenna. So if it's a six-foot antenna, the centerline of the antenna is three feet. So, 115 feet, antenna centerline, four sectors, and you get really nice coverage that covers most of, sorry, just gonna give the comparison. So flip it quickly back, and then you see how well it, it covers the white spaces, a lot of the white spaces that are in a lot of, in most of Groveland area. Any questions you may have, I can answer now or later on related to this.
No. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's okay, yeah, thanks, Sohail. Yeah, I can do it, whatever you want, yes. Well, just, just to give you some orientation, this is the, the Swamin tennis club. Tower's in the back corner of that property behind the parking lot. I think the site plan probably shows that a little better, right? So this is, the driveway off the road would run through this existing parking area, and then back into a little, there's a little grove here of wooded area. The tree line would be preserved on this front side there, that's the side that faces the, the street. The installation is a, it's a 50-by-50 fence compound within Verizon's lease area, and the pole is planned for the center of that compound. This just gives you the, the view at the, at that scale. Does this add any, oh, this, this grading plan, and the, there's two pads, there's a, there's an equipment pad, and there's a, is that a generator or a tank? Propane pad. So there's a propane pad and an equipment pad, an electric panel here, a single parking space, which is really all you need. There's no traffic at these things. They're, as I'm sure you know, nobody lives at these facilities or works at these facilities. They show up and, and maintain the equipment a couple times a month, or if there's an emergency. So there's 24/7 monitoring of these, and if, if for some reason it went on the fritz in the middle of the night, someone would be able to go out there if it was an emergency, or they'd be out there the next morning. Otherwise, there's just a routine maintenance schedule where they check, calibrate equipment, make sure that the propane tank is fueled, et cetera. And so here's, here's just a, I guess, a closer view of this. The equipment cabinets on the pad, the propane tank, the fenced compound, it's a crushed, crushed stone base, gravel driveway, very, very basic installation.
And the elevation view.
And the elevation view. So this, this, this shows you, although, although we're proposing to have four antennas per sector, four on each side of the pole, this is the top view looking down at the 115 foot level for Verizon. This also presents an opportunity for the town, if other carriers come in here, they presumably also need coverage in that, in that part of town, based on where the other towers in town are located. If they did, Verizon would let them co-locate on this pole, you know, provided they got your approval as needed to do so. And so this, this just sets up what the pole looks like. And that's, that's basically it. It's a pretty, it's a pretty straightforward kind of standard monopole-type design. You know, we're happy to take any questions. I can go through the argument on the variance front, if you'd like me to, whatever, doesn't spend your time unnecessarily and gets to the points that you're interested in.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we just had, I sent this out to our various departments if they had any comments, and there really was only one by the electric department. If I can read that for you all?
Please.
This is from Kevin Snow, the general manager. He said, "My comment to the developer would be the same as it has been for other developers, not necessarily for monopoles. Some components are terribly backlogged. We do have some transformers in stock, but we also need to have the developer tell us what the anticipated load is for the facility. We need to order it, and it may be a year-plus before we get it in stock. Also a reminder to the developer, they are responsible for the installation of conduit. Groveland Municipal Light Department would install the primary electrical feed and purchase any components needed too, and including the transformer. The developer would be required to reimburse Groveland Municipal Light Department for the cost of the installation."
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
That was it.
Any questions for the board from the group at this point?
Well, not so far.
Thank you, okay.
I have a few questions.
Please, sir.
My name is Joseph Bryan, 865 Salem Street. In 2000, I got a permit for 150-foot monopole cell tower. It was appealed by the neighborhood. I went to court, and I won my case. The judge gave me my permit back. But the zoning board of appeals put a restriction on it, only one carrier. It was illegal, they violated my civil rights, discriminated against me, and it became so vindictive, it turned into a hate crime. I still got the tower permit. I'm coming back after the zoning board of appeals now. I've been waiting all these years. There's a subdivision going out, they have 192 units, and I have butted. I have a 40-foot road to the tower, I have the right to pass and repass. It's on Nelson Street. And these people are coming in and asking for variance to put it in residential land, another variance for the height, and where the crow flies, they might need another one 'cause within two miles, there weren't another towers. So like a lot of them questions answered, please.
Yeah, I'm not sure if those questions were addressed to us, to the board. I mean, so I will say, personally, I was not privy to your previous application served, and, so personally, I was not privy to your previous application. If you would like to resubmit another application to the board following this, we'd be very happy to, to see it.
I've just been sitting on it, had a lot of help issues. Now I'm getting nine different ways, I got under 92 units, got my bag here, detention gone, left my bag here next to my separate system, and a 40-foot road is gonna put it on, how many kids, school buses gang win, the kids have to come out.
Do you have any questions or concerns concerning this?
Any questions, what?
Questions or concerns concerning this application?
I can follow up, you know, take a variance off. They need to have the right to do it when they put it on. I have all the members of every tower. Larry Kelly was number one, I was number two, Bo was number three, Tommy Groll was number four, the congregation church is number five. So I'm not gonna sit back anymore. I'm, I'm over 90 years old, and I'm gonna fight now for what I got, what I worked for all these, since 1981, I've been fighting that, yeah. And you know what the mess is up there, it's still, I'm not gonna back away.
Okay, we look forward to your application.
I mean, people told me if I should have talked to lawyers, I have a couple, now I don't know what I'm gonna do yet, how I'm gonna do it. I figure let these people wait a month or two. So I'm bringing a suit, we see what comes up.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, so at this point, I will open it up to board discussion.
What's left to be done for us?
So I think, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, we still have the crane test left, left to be done on the site?
Again, Chip Fredt here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. Site acquisition, yeah, we typically delay doing a crane test or a balloon float in favor of waiting for the first hearing, so that everybody's on notice of when it'll actually take place. I've had instances where an application wasn't accepted as complete until I did the balloon float and had the Viewshed photos. We submitted it, and then people could hang, 'cause we floated the balloon without knowing about it. So thank you for your patience in waiting for us. We feel this is the right way to do it. So if, if you want, we can schedule that together this evening. We'll do a public notice. Go ahead.
Yes, and I have spoken to a couple members of the board about this before, but so, obviously, this application is for the variance. Our bylaws require also a special permit through the zoning board, and then also the site plan approval through the planning board. We do have a couple of members that overlap between the zoning board and planning board, and it's up to the, both boards, obviously, and I'll speak to the planning board as well, but from my opinion, and I think for those involved, it might be easier to have a joint meeting for our next meeting between the planning board and zoning board, so we can kind of hit it all out of the park at once, if you will.
Before, that'd be great.
Yeah, and if, so if you want to schedule the balloon test, I think, again, you're, I, I agree with your point that it makes sense to publicly notify everyone, you know, get the ball rolling beforehand. I can communicate that with the planning board as well, so everyone's kind of moving in tandem.
So we'll work for you to set that up, is everything?
Yep, I do planning, zoning, conservation, master plan.
Lucky you.
And the board's happy with that, and we'll...
If the board is happy with that, and they're okay with me scheduling, helping to schedule all of these, then I'm more than happy to do that.
Please, thank you.
Andy, is there any other thing we need to do other than that?
As far as the application goes, there was just the renderings that I had spoken to Derek about.
Right, and those would be made from the balloon test or the crane test? Because what we do is we do simulated photos, not real, you know, architectural, simulated photos where they can superimpose the tower on the background.
Sorry, where they can superimpose the tower on the background.
Yep.
I did have a question for you about the special permit. So because we'd applied for the use variance, it seems like the special permit would just be duplicative on that, right? You could condition a, a use variance, and because the bylaw doesn't allow...
Correct.
...wireless by special permit in this district, that's why we went for the use, use variance?
The variance, yes, it's just...
We do need a site plan, I understand that.
Yes. My thinking is, and I'm, again, if the board disagrees, when we notified, it was for a variance, not a special permit.
Right.
So, and our bylaw does call out the requirement for a special permit.
Right, but we've asked for a variance from that requirement, because we're in a district where you can't get a special permit to do it, because we're not in the overlay. That's, that's the reason. You can only, I think you can only grant it in the overlay or in a couple of other specific lights, yeah.
In the overlay, correct. I, I'm just seeing it a different way than you, I guess.
Okay, all right. I, you know, it's, it's, we're in front of the same board, it's not, it's not a problem, but if, if, you know, if we, we can figure out one way or the other, it's just, but it is another application, another hearing, another notice, et cetera, for the same subject, that's why.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, you're gonna have to come back anyway, though, right?
True.
Yes, so they have to come back, they can come back before both boards at the same time, it's...
Okay.
It's actually two versions, one's to...
Is that something we can do all at the same meeting?
If the boards so choose, and if scheduling and everything works out, so I'll have to talk with the planning board as well, to make sure we can line up a meeting.
It'll take us a little bit to pull together this, the site plan application and to get that filed with you.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be in touch, and I, I don't see why there would be an issue with the boards, it's really just getting everyone in the same room at the same time. But I think in the long run, it would be much easier to do it that way.
Okay, that's fine.
Jason, and then how far out do you think that next meeting would happen?
It depends on when we would do the balloon test and when the site plan application would be ready.
I, I mean, we can do the site plan application pretty quickly, as long as we can use these plans, which I think we can for the most part. And you want to do the balloon test probably within the next few weeks, I would think, right?
Quick question for you, how, how much advance notice do you typically need for a meeting, any kind of sidewalk you might do?
For the balloon test, yeah.
For the balloon test, right.
We would have to post 48 hours in advance, but to schedule everyone, I would like at least a week.
And we would advertise the balloon test, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we, we could do the, I mean, yeah, we can advertise the balloon test, and we can, yeah, and so it would be both for the planning and zoning board, so 48 hours for that.
Same notification process as we did for this evening, right?
Yep.
Perfect. So I would say it'd be probably two weeks anyhow. You meet once a month as needed, is that right?
We would stand each once a month, and then we have a second day a month if needed.
Ten days twice, okay. I think, I think that we could provide a weather cooperates with the balloon. I think that we could probably pull together a balloon float in two weeks, and then have those simulations or renderings done, as you referred to them, in time for your October October.
Okay, that's what we'll aim for, then.
So we're, we're looking at our next meeting being most likely a month out.
Correct. And I will inform the board, I will not be able to be present at that meeting on the 5th. I'll be out of the country.
Likewise.
Okay. So we might just, it might not, we might not be able to do the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay, so...
When are you guys gonna be back?
And that would give us a little more breathing room, all right, to prepare the application, the site's under due special use permit application, and then also simulations...
I'll be back this Sunday before.
Hey, I'm sorry.
If we were to, if we were to tentatively schedule a meeting with you folks once again, the second meeting of October, if I have that right, then that would give us a little more room to prepare the Viewshed analysis, those renderings of the, of the, of the tower, the special use permit application, and the SPR, yeah, yeah, site plan review. And then, of course, give the planning board members themselves time to schedule and then come in here and join us for a joint, joint hearing.
Can I make a suggestion? If we don't know the night that the planning, if, if you're not sure where the planning board can meet on the same night as the board, can we continue it to a date certain now, and then you can continue it? If we continue it till your October meeting, you could then continue it on, in October to the date that you will have confirmed with the planning board? Because right now, we don't know the date, I don't think, do we?
I mean, no, well, I won't, like we just said, to, I will not be able to be there on the 5th, and neither will our chairman.
When are you coming back in?
I'm coming back on the 11th.
All right, and Chris, you'll be back?
Be back on the 9th, which is that Sunday.
Sunday. The Conservation Commission meets on the 12th.
Here?
Here, yeah, and I have to be at those meetings, too.
What's either a little before or after that?
There's the 13th, Thursday, the 13th.
That's okay with me.
I'll give everyone a second to look at their phones. And I don't believe anyone has regularly scheduled meetings on Thursdays, so we should be fine. We can always meet in the back meeting room if we needed to.
I'm out of town on the 13th.
Okay. What about everyone else?
I can do the 13th.
Do you want to tentatively do the 13th, and then if needed, we can shift?
Sure. As long as it's, yeah, as long as it's a date certain.
Yeah.
So we'll say...
Well, and if it happens to work out, then that is even better, right?
Yes. If it's the same time 7:30, is that your table?
Yeah.
Is there any other information you want that we haven't provided already, other than the balloon test, that you know of now, that you work out between now and then?
Or anything else we need other than the crane test?
Previously, the board has requested radio frequency report peer review...
Hmm. That's right, thank you.
For other cell towers that have gone in.
Right, is, is that something that we could, that we could have done in the, in the interim, before the next meeting?
Anticipate so.
Okay.
Just for clarification on, on the test that we're gonna schedule...
Thank you, Mike. Just for clarification on the test, we're gonna schedule the Viewshed test. It will be a balloon on a string, 'cause we can't get a crane into this particular location. When we can drive a crane to some of our sites, we do that in advance, because weather is no longer an issue, but in this instance here, it's a wooded area, and we'll be tethering a string with the balloon on top, so, just so you know what you're looking for.
Yeah, it's, I've, I've been out to the site, and it's completely densely wooded, you wouldn't be able to get anything in there. That's fine. What else are you gonna do?
Okay.
And then what they do is, you know, if there's a wind that blows it a little bit, they adjust when they do the photo simulations to make sure it's at the right location, but the people who are looking at the balloon might see it a little bit over, so...
What about the peer review? Did you say that was done at all the other towers?
It was done at, at least the last one or two. I wasn't in town for those, but talking to my predecessor, it's something that the other boards had asked for.
All right.
All right, I don't see that as being a bad, a bad idea.
It's not a bad thing, no.
No, I think it's a necessity.
Yeah. All right, yes, yes, I think I'd, I think we'd like to go forward with that. Is there any other discussion or questions for the applicants while, while we have them here?
No, great.
Thank, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there any motion to table until the next meeting? Continue by that? Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
But make a motion to continue patient 2023-1 until the next board meeting date?
Tentatively on the 13th.
Tentatively on the 13th.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. All right, next on the agenda, meeting minutes, approval of July 11, 2020 meeting minutes. All right, Doctor. Nice. Does anyone have a chance to review?
Yep.
Thank you, have a nice night.
Thank you, John.
I'll make a motion to approve the Monday, July 11th, meeting minutes.
Second.
Those in favor?
I can't, right?
All right. Andy, any correspondence or other board...
And as far as other kind of updates that the board would be interested in, as two of our members know, Neil Bailey from the Cory Project, he presented in front of Boris Lockman at the meeting a month and a half ago, or maybe two now, to just give an update on the project. Things are going well. They're still filling. Other than that, the only other substantial update is that we have moved offices. Yay. So, I will no longer be in the office right across from there. I'm going in the highway department's office. So, I'll be right next to the town administrator now. If you're looking for me, I'll be in there. If anyone wants to help me go through my files, it's greatly appreciated. I'm kidding. But, yeah, other than that, that about covers it.
All right. Any other board, board business?
We're good.
All good?
All good.
All good.
All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:02.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good.